And just ask you to bless them and watch over and care for them. Thank you for our Sheriff's Department and our Maryland State Police, those who are law enforcement, and ask that you will give them divine protection and watch over and care for them. Thank you for our first responders. Thank you, Lord, for our military, those who serve faithfully. So bless them, Lord, and watch over and care for them. And Lord, as we look for this weather coming in, we thank you for our Department of Public Works and ask you to bless them and watch over those who serve us behind the scenes faithfully. So God, we are so thankful for, again, this place we call home. And Lord, we're also thankful for this week, as we set aside Valentine's Day. Lord, we're reminded in Scripture of the greatest, that I believe, greatest Scripture in the Bible amongst many that says, "For God so loved the world that he gave his only Son, that whoever believes in him should not perish but have everlasting life." So Lord, thank you for that great love that you give to us. And now bless us, guide us, protect us, be of this meeting, be of all that takes place today and in the days and weeks to come. And we ask these things in the name of Jesus Christ, our Savior. Amen and amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Swanson. Appreciate you coming in today and visiting with us. Next item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda as presented?
I move that we approve and adopt. The agenda is submitted.
Second.
I have a motion of second to prove the agenda is presented. Is there any discussion on that motion hearing? None. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. First thing on the public service today, Commissioner Grasso is online with us. You all can't see that, but she's a little under the weather like a lot of our citizens here in Calvert, but she's a trooper and she wanted to participate, so we appreciate her zooming in today. Thank you, Commissioner Grasso. And we, last week, near the end of our meeting, we got word that Commissioner Fraser had passed from North Beach. Just want to take a moment to talk about Commissioner Fraser, Dr. Fraser, who was a dentist here in Calvert County for many, 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 many years, and was still practicing till the day he died. But he was a great Calvert citizen, loved Calvert County and North Beach, served as mayor on the council, and the mayor of North Beach, served as a county commissioner for two terms. And so we want to extend our sincere condolences out to the Fraser family for their loss. Just want to remind everybody that next Tuesday night on February the 18th, we're going to hold a public hearing to hopefully finalize the zoning ordinance update, and that'll be next Tuesday, the 18th, 6:00 PM, right here in this commissioner hearing room. In the event that public comments conclude before 7:00 PM, the board has committed to recessing the meeting until 7:00 PM, then reopening it to allow those unable to comment earlier an opportunity to express their views. Residents are urged to review the proposed amendments to the comprehensive plan and town center master plans, the zoning ordinance and zoning map updates. Residents may also listen or comment by phone. They can call 301-715-8592, or they can zoom in. The meeting ID is 899-4188-8251. And then there's, you'll given prompts of how to get in to speak. We do want, at this time, want to thank our Department of Planning and Zoning. This has been a long process. I think it's been 18 months probably since they started this. Want to thank all the staff at Planning and Zoning, all the citizens that came out for the public hearings, provided comments. We can't do this without your input, and this is, this is a time where you help to shape Calvert County. We go through the comprehensive plan, which sort of lays out a vision, but the zoning ordinance is the teeth that backs up that vision to make sure that Calvert County looks the way you want it to look. So we certainly encourage you to participate next Tuesday night and thank all those that have previously. Just a reminder that there's a planned road closure in Solomon's for a tree removal project that's on the old road, 765, between McDonald's and the shopping center. And that is supposed to occur, occur today or next, I'm sorry, got postponed because of the weather, I'm sorry. It's going to be start next Tuesday on the 18th, so next week that tree removal is going to occur. And also Linda Kelly Animal Shelter, they're not going to be in today with an animal because the, a lot of the staff at the shelter are sick. There's a lot of illness going around right now, but they are starting today, holding a free adoption, or $14 adoption for all cats and dogs to qualified adopters, and that'll run from today until Saturday, the 15th. And once again, that's a $14 adoption fee for all dogs and cats. And that concludes my public service announcements for today. First item on the agenda today is a proclamation celebrating Black History Month. Commissioner Ireland, and we have some representatives in the audience.
Do me a favor, introduce yourself and say a few words about the program and why you're here today, and then come on forward.
Good morning. My name is Deborah Harris, and I'm the president of the NAACP of Calvert County. It's my honor, our honor, on behalf of NAACP Calvert to receive the proclamation for Black History Month. We thank the Board of County Commissioners for your support of our organization, as well as your continued recognition of the Black History Month, where we celebrate and recognize the many accomplishments and contributions that African Americans have made to our community as well as to our country. So we thank you. While I'm here, just want to share an upcoming Black History event on Saturday, February the 15th. We're partnering with the American Legion Gray Ray Post 220 in Prince Frederick, and we are, they are celebrating and recognizing 12 veterans, and there will be presented the quilts of honor, and we will have Chris Banks, who's from the Calvert Historical Society, share about some local black history, along with some youth dancers and performers. One other thing that we're doing, it's coming up in March the 9th, we're partnering with the VFW in California, Maryland, along with the American Legion Posts 274 in Lusby, and they are recognizing two Centarian veterans. We have two veterans that will be, be 100 years old, World War II veterans, and we're partnering with them as well on March the 9th.
I'm quite sure Katie has those dates in our calendar. I cannot make Saturday.
Yes. Yes, thank you so much.
I was planning on coming Saturday, but I have to attend a funeral instead. I apologize for that, but I had it in my calendar to come, so.
And so we're so pleased to have so many members of our NAACP here with us today.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning. So yeah, I'm Michael.
Come on up front, man.
Adjutant of the Gray Ray Post. So I wanted to let you know, I put an exhibit in the Calvert Library, thanks to Kerry Wilson. I sent a copy of that to Administrator Willis, so he can send it around to all of you. Unfortunately, the only person old enough to remember those beaches is probably Commissioner Hans, but everybody could take a look at it. So it's all the black beaches that used to be here, like Seagull Beach and Cassell Beach and places like that. But it's on the public computers now at the Calvert Libraries, all of them.
Okay, so pick somebody off the top of your head and talk about them that would have been involved in our county in black history. I know it's there.
That would have been involved besides the 100-year-old person that you're going to be celebrating as his birthday?
You pick.
Someone else that's involved with the Calvert County Black History?
Someone you believe left a mark on Calvert County that was from Calvert County as far as black history goes. Just pick one off the top of your head.
Oh, there was a lot of those.
I know there was.
The main one that I like to talk about, his name was Nathaniel Carroll. He was born enslaved in Calvert County. He was actually raised up in Dunkirk, but he was sold down to Sunderland, and he worked six days a week as an enslaved person, Monday through Saturday. His owner had him working those days. On Sundays, this guy was so industrious that he took part-time jobs to make money part-time on Sundays, and he used the money he made part-time to buy his own freedom and then to buy his father's freedom. Took his father up to Baltimore. He still wasn't finished working, and he started the first old folks home in the state of Maryland, possibly one of the earliest ones in the country. And so even when you drive through Baltimore now and you're heading towards the Inner Harbor, you'll see signs that say N.M. Carroll Senior Housing or N.M. Carroll Manor. And he did this in the 1880s, so he passed away in the 1930s.
I knew you'd have a good story in there. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Sheila Majikew Parker, and I'm the secretary for NAACP.
Good morning. I'm Chris Banks, and I'm one of the members at large for the NAACP, and I'm active with the Calvert Historical Society, but I won't share historical fact this one.
And she's my neighbor.
I'm Joyce Freeland, and I'm second vice president, and I know you, and you know me.
Morning. I'm Art Simpson. I'm the third vice president for Calvert County Branch NAACP. And a person that I would think about is Michael Moore. He was a very good friend of mine and very active in the community.
So Sheila was my teacher at Calvert High School for years.
I'm Stella Thomas, and I'm the chair of the Political Action Committee.
Lisa Siciliano, Assistant Secretary and Chair of Health Committee.
Good morning. I'm Charles Bennett. I'm a member of the NAACP.
So without further ado, I'm going to read the proclamation. Whereas Black History Month is an annual celebration recognizing the achievements of black Americans in United States history, and whereas Black History Month was first proposed by black educators and the black United Students at Kent State University in February 1969, with the first celebration held at the university from January 2nd through February 28th, 1970, I still wasn't here. And whereas President Gerald Ford recognized Black History Month in 1976 during the celebration of the United States Bicentennial, he urged Americans to seize the opportunity to honor the too oft neglected accomplishments of black Americans in every area of endeavor throughout history. Every United States president since 1976 has officially designated February as Black History Month. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners encourages its citizens to celebrate Black History Month in their communities during the month of February and pause to reflect on the numerous contributions of black Americans in our county, now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County that the month of February 2025 is celebrated and recognized as Black History Month, being further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners urges every citizen to celebrate the month with reflection on the many great achievements of black Americans in our county and country, given under our hands and seal this 11th day of February 2025, signed by all five commissioners.
All right, we're going to come down just a little bit this way, take a little step. There we go. We're going to scooch in a little bit. Okay, I was like, wait, it looked like that woman was standing. Can we get him in?
I'm going to undo everything that came down.
All right, just maybe back.
I'm sorry.
Commissioner Hans, can you go either to your left or your right a little?
Thank you.
Smile. Three, two, one. Three, two, one.
Hey, before everybody gets out of here, Mark Willis, county administrator, I want to point one thing out because I want you to be able to go to the website. We're going to post this later. We're going to give it to all county employees. We're also going to put it on our website. So Michael Kent is a historian. I think when he was born, he started recording stuff, and that's kind of how I met him, but you're not going to be able to see this, we'll get it out to you, but there are 69 sites. Every site has a picture and every sign has an editorial description of black history in this county. And Seagull Beach, for example, is one of those locations. So it's not just in Calvert County, it's in the Mideast. And I tell you what, it is just wonderful information to go back, and if you want to know roots of Calvert County, it's in this right here. So thank you, Michael.
And thank you for letting me put you on the spot, sir.
So the next item on the agenda is an award from the Employee Recognition Committee.
Good morning, commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Wes LaPray, the retired member of the Employee Recognition Committee, and I'm here today to introduce Calvert County Government's December 2024 Employee of the Month. You've been pretty busy, so we couldn't get on your schedule very easily. The Employee of the Month Award acknowledges individual excellence for superior job performance or special individual efforts. Our December 2024 Employee of the Month is Dean Hamilton from the Calvert County Sheriff's Office. Dean, you want to make your way forward? Where is Dean?
He's back there. He's coming.
Dean is being awarded the Employee of the Month for his work in the Sheriff's Office supporting a wide variety of duties, including civil process between courts throughout Maryland and nationwide. I suspect there'll be several people waiting to talk about Dean's work after I finish because he's been very conscientious and thorough throughout various areas of the Sheriff's Office. However, I can speak to the quality of Dean's care for our employees pretty specifically. Many of you may know that one of the recognition programs that ERC administers is called the "Hey, Someone Noticed" program. It doesn't cost a lot, but it means a lot to the people who get it. Fellow employees volunteer, they nominate folks from throughout their day, someone who treated them nicely beyond what they think is standard procedure for our very high professional services organization, and they noticed something special, and they wrote it up, they took the time to write it up, and we give that person a card and a gift card as well, expressing the appreciation that they were noticed. The ERC started this program about 10 years ago when Dean was a member of the ERC. He supported this program, a then new award, and was instrumental in starting this program in its simple but meaningful recognition ways. We were sad to see him leave the ERC as he started a new job in the Sheriff's Office, but he's excelled there as well. We knew one day there would be a great team player for the Sheriff's Office, and he has been. In a few minutes, you'll hear more about Dean's recent activities and how they affected the operation of the Sheriff's Office, but in recognition of his exceptional performance, professionalism, and dedication, Dean Hamilton has been selected as the Employee of the Month for December 2024. Ladies and gentlemen, Dean Hamilton. And if there are other family members or office members who'd like to step forward, that's fine.
Go ahead, Franny. Get him.
Hi, good morning. Is it okay that I read what was actually submitted in his nomination?
You can start there.
Great. So Mr. Hamilton receives and tracks all civil process casework for sheriff's service related from, or received from attorney's offices and courts throughout Maryland and nationwide, collects and tracks sheriff's service fees, staffs and monitors the administrative and judicial services customer service window during normal business hours, which includes the daily monitoring of interior and exterior cameras and doorbells. When his coworker has an influx in ID appointments, without asking, Mr. Hamilton steps in to assist arriving visitors by vetting the next scheduled appointment, asking them to wait in the lobby until a deputy can screen, then escort them through the secured area. Over the past year, Mr. Hamilton has spotted numerous situations occur outside and within the District 2 lobby, including a young subject experiencing an emotional breakdown by our Sally Port, a customer walking in with a sawed-off shotgun for surrender, customers speaking to staff members disrespectfully requiring a sworn supervisor's presence, and breach in security protocol which required policy review and implementation. One of Mr. Hamilton's most important skills is his ability to communicate complex topics effectively. Over the last year, this ability has been very useful for the agency and has helped alleviate several problems that arose. His most recent safety catch was the front steps of the Calvert House. Several bricks came loose, creating hazard to the public, agency personnel, and service animals. Mr. Hamilton was proactive and notified management of a potential hazard, which was quickly blocked off with traffic cones and tape. After General Services was notified, their assessment resulted in a contract company fixing numerous bricks to the historic Calvert House, also known as the first hospital erected in Calvert County. Mr. Hamilton has been with the Sheriff's Office for 12 years. He has an infectious, positive demeanor throughout the week and is always thoughtful and kind. He brings a wealth of knowledge from his former years as a retired correctional supervisor, making him a valued team member, and our county government is blessed to have him on its team. For these reasons, I nominate Dean Hamilton for the Calvert County Government December Employee of the Month. So thank you so much for.
Thank you. Would you like to say anything else? Now's your time.
Dean has, Dean has been just a essential piece added to our agency. He is always thoughtful and kind. He assesses things before speaking, and so much of his background has influenced those around us in the office. He is very visual with picking up on baddie language when someone is down in an environment of law enforcement. You don't know what kind of cases and what kind of stresses are going on with them, and Dean is that sounding board that always brings them in and tries to get them to talk about it so that they can release it and hopefully go on with their day. So I truly appreciate having him as a team member and as a friend too, because he just has one of the biggest hearts you can ask for. And he ensures that we have bougie lunches, and the only reason that he tries to have these bougie lunches is actually for camaraderie, and I truly appreciate him in always. So thank you so much, Dean.
Well, thank you. Who's next? Sheriff? Commissioners, thank you, sir. Thank you for doing this for the employees of Calvert County. But Dean Hamilton, as you heard the words spoken this morning, a lot goes beyond just policy and procedure and his job duties, but also he keeps me up to speed on world news, county news, and he does that. I mean, I like that, but Dean also, like I said, goes beyond the job. He remembers people's birthdays, he brings people together, always has a smile on his face, and I enjoy coming to work with him every day and what he does for not only the citizens, but the folks here at the Calvert County Sheriff's Office. But thank you, Dean. I appreciate your work and I appreciate you as your person. Thank you. All right. Anybody else? So when you came to the Sheriff's Office, you started out not where you are now. What did you do when you first came to the Sheriff's Office?
I was in Animal Control as a dispatch supervisor, and then I went up, no, I started as a SDO, SEO, and then I went to Animal Control as a dispatcher, and then when Animal Control moved to the shelter, my wife said, my wife of 37 years said, "You can't work at the shelter because our house is not big enough to bring home all the animals that you're going to fall in love with. You need to change jobs." And I didn't want to change jobs, but I did because I have three dogs and two cats that I take care of every day, so that was the decision made by my wife and me. And as a Sheriff's Department employee, if you just look at the back wall, it's a humbling fact that those guys will give their life for you. It's a humbling fact that they'll get hit by a car for you or get shot in the leg for you. It's a humbling fact that these guys do this every day with little or no recognition, and the pay is not great at all. So to be a member of something like that is my honor, and I enjoy it tremendously, and that's why I've stayed 12 years. Some of y'all know I retired a long time ago, and I could have been gone, but I truly like where I work and I like the people that I work with. We have, they've taught me a sense of humor to not take things so seriously. When I came there, I thought I was the toughest guy in the room. They certainly showed me that's not the truth. Yep. So before I go, they double dared me not to tell these two jokes, so I have to. Yes, they're clean, so I have to, have to show you that I'm not scared. So the first one is, what do you call quiet tennis? That's tennis that you play without the racket. Okay, all right, there's one.
You are brave there.
Bet you sat there laughing, though. He says I'm brave but laughing. Okay, the last one is, what has five toes but is not your foot? My foot. Thank y'all for the award. I've enjoyed it. I appreciate it.
Hey, y'all make your way up here if you would for the picture. He showed it. He actually did have support here for this. Come on up, Dana. Susan and Dana, y'all got to come up too. Thank you. So I had the opportunity to work with Dean as well. I remember when he first came there as SEO, and I was pretty sure that's what he came there as, and you know, as he said, he's retired from Prince George's Corrections. He brought us a few good things from PG, believe it or not. Some things we tell him to keep, you know, but Dean is an avid coin collector, so I'm going to give you this, this special Calvert County Commissioner coin today. That's yours, sir. Absolutely. And here's your award, and I'm just going to keep the check. Congratulations, Dean.
This will hold my tight button together. David Allen.
Come on, David Allen, you work with it too.
The toughest guy I know right there.
Come on up here, room up here for you, sir.
There's probably going to be a lot of shifting, so you guys don't have to smile quite yet. Pretend you like him, come on. Commissioner Hans, can you move a little to your left?
I have to.
Way to blink. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Did I actually get everybody? No, I didn't. I actually, wait, hang on. Can I have you move over a little to your left? And this time you guys have to smile.
Just smile like it's one of Dean's jokes.
How you get the Kleenex to dance? Roll the boogie in it.
You're not giving up your ding dong.
Thank, I got everybody. Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Yeah.
Have a good day. Thank you.
Dean.
I'm sorry, I didn't know you were here. Hold on one second. Thank you, bud. Thank you. Congratulations.
I'll be watching.
Take care of it.
For the Sheriff's Office. Yeah, teddy bears. Thank you. Commissioner Hans.
So the next item on the agenda is appointments. Ms. Emily?
Good morning, commissioners. Emily Sharif, Constituent Services Specialist, back again this week with another round of appointments. So we have an appointment for your consideration today for the Board of Library Trustees. Staff recommends that you reappoint Ronald E. Croupy to the Board of Library Trustees, and following this appointment, no vacancies will remain.
Mr. President, I move that we reappoint Ronald E. Croupy to the Board of Library Trustees.
Second.
A motion of second that we reappoint Ronald Croupy to the Board of Library Trustees. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Got you. Thank you.
Thank you. The second and the last appointment for your consideration today is for the Student Safety and Wellbeing Advisory Committee. Staff recommends that you appoint Andrew Woodford as the Sheriff's Office Representative. And following this appointment, there will be one vacancy for a District 2 representative.
I'm going to recuse myself from this one.
Mr. President, I move that we appoint Andrew Woodford as the Sheriff's Office Representative to the Student Safety and Wellbeing Advisory Committee.
Second.
I have a motion of second that we appoint Andrew Woodford as the Sheriff's Office Representative to the Student Safety and Wellbeing Advisory Committee. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I move that we adopt and approve the consent agenda items.
Second.
A motion of second that we approve the consent items today. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. I'm sorry, Catherine, there's a delay here I gotta be cognizant of. Um, next item on the agenda is new business. Department of Finance and Budget Audit Results for Fiscal Year 2024.
Good morning, Director.
Good morning. If I may, just take a little bit of time for an introduction. Again, Bruce Miller for the record, Finance Director. Chris will be presenting an overview of, of the audit. Uh, but beforehand, I'd like to introduce Caleb Brandon. He is the Acting Deputy for Accounting, and everybody knows Elizabeth. She's a immense help. Um, I can't say enough. She not only works on the budget side for us, but for the last two, two and a half years, has spent a lot of time on the accounting side. Um, and then, unfortunately, Casey Waldron, who is not feeling well today, um, but again, an invaluable person on that team. Um, as you know, we had some difficulty, uh, starting about two years ago. Uh, we didn't get the audit out until June for 23, until June last year. Um, and this team turned around and did a remarkable job getting out the Fiscal Year 24 Audit within, um, four months, um, in the beginning of November. Uh, remarkable, um, effort, if you will, to do so much in a very, very short time, understanding all, all the underlying issues that went, went with that. Um, and then finally, um, uh, I'm gonna ask Beth to do a short financial overview, um, uh, before Chris gets into the detail, just so that, um, we set the table on that. So, with that, I'll turn it over to staff.
Good morning. Beth Richmond, Senior Advisor, Department of Finance and Budget. I just wanted to cover the 1.7 million in the budget deficit, deficiency that Caleb will speak about in, in the memo in a second. So, that actually was good news. So, the adopted projected amount of use of fund balance was originally 18.6 million. So, to only use 1.7 when the audit was set and done, that was excellent news. So, how we got there was expenses were under by about 27.5 million under budget, but the revenue shortfall was 29.1. So, we still had to use some fund balance, but to go from 18.6 projected use down to 1.7, we actually had a very good FY '24. So, I just wanted to cover that, yes, we had a deficiency in '24, but it was a lot better than we anticipated. So, I'll turn it over to Caleb now.
Hi, Caleb Brandon, Deputy Director of Accounting, Department of Finance and Budget. Would you like me to read the memo for, uh, for the record?
You probably don't have to.
Okay.
Would be good.
Then, at this point, I'm gonna turn it over to Chris Lehman. He's our, um, auditor from SB and Company LLC.
Well, thank you, Caleb, and good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Again, I'm, uh, Chris Lehman. I'm the, I was the engagement partner, again, for this year's Financial Statement Audit Services. I have a brief presentation that I'll go through that goes through either our firm or industry required communications. If you have any questions as I go through, through this, just feel free to, to jump in, or you could hold those to the end. Either way is perfectly fine. Um, here you'll see the scope of services that we were engaged to perform. I would, the primary service would be the audit of the June 30, 2024 Financial Statements. The Financial Statements, you may also hear the term ACFR, or Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, more or less same difference when we say Financial Statements. Uh, in addition, the county is required to undergo a federally mandated single audit. That is a annual, uh, federally mandated compliance audit for any government entity that is, that spends more than $750,000 per year of federal funds. In addition, we do, uh, issue a separate set of financial statements for the Calvert-Marie Museum, as well as they're required to form the, file the federal form, 990, on an annual basis as well. Uh, in addition, there's also a separate audit of soil conservation, uh, revenue and expenses. There's also a audit of the 911, uh, revenue and expenses. In addition, the financial statements, when they go to the state of Maryland upon issuance, the state also requires a Uniform Financial Report, or UFR for short, and that's prepared by management and reviewed by us as auditors. And then lastly, once the, we're in the final stages of the single audit, the single audit due date is March 31st, that will clearly be met. And once that's filed, a, uh, data collection form will also be filed with the federal government to let the feds know that the county's met their responsibility for the single audit. I know it's a mouthful, but that, those are all the, all the services that we, um, have performed. At a high level here, we've issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. That's, uh, po, that's a good opinion. That's a clean opinion. That would be the best, the, the best opinion we could give under professional standards. We did not discover any instances of fraud, a financial statement. It's not a forensic audit, but we are required to have a healthy skepticism, uh, that fraud could happen at, at any time. We did not discover any material weaknesses in the internal controls. If you remember, last year, we did consider the delinquency with getting the audit done, um, a material weakness, but given, as Bruce had mentioned, you know, really going from a 12-month delay to getting the financial statements done in four months within a one-year span is, is very impressive, um, to, to move that timing up. So, we, we cleared that, um, material weakness. We also received the full cooperation of management, and although we haven't issued the single audit yet, um, we're, we have no findings, uh, to report in the single audit. So, it'll be a, a clean compliance audit. Uh, this is just a, just picture of the risk ba, our risk-based audit approach of the phases that we go through in the audit. The, the next two or three slides that I go through is just a high-level, uh, summary of our conclusion on the control environment and the key controls within the financial statements. It was, uh, uh, clean results for the year, so when we look at the control environment, there's a framework that we use, both for the financial statement audit and it's required to be used for the single audit, that there's five interrelated components that we look at related to the control environment, management's risk assessment process, the specific control activities of the county, the information and communication that's shared and used between departments, as well as the ongoing monitoring of controls. And we've concluded that the environment was effective for the period under audit. And then looking at key processes that impact the financial statements, our objective here is, one is determining, is the process designed effectively? Uh, and then secondly, based upon testing, is it operating effectively? So, it's a two-part analysis that we conduct with each one of these processes listed here. And each one of these processes has, uh, some significant effect, uh, on the financial statements. You know, depending on the process, it'll impact different accounts. Um, but we've concluded that each one of these processes was both designed and operating effectively, uh, for the period under audit. Any questions thus far? Okay. The, oh, I forgot about this. I know, uh, Beth and Caleb touched on this a bit. I'm sure it's, uh, not very legible unless you have a magnifying glass, uh, here, but this is, this is an excerpt just right out of the, uh, financial statements that we've issued. This is the budget, uh, to actual, uh, numbers. I know Beth did, uh, highlight, uh, the reason for that deficit, but near the bottom there is where you'll see that approximate 1.6, 1.7, uh, million-dollar deficit there on a budgetary basis. And then, uh, the, the last few slides here, I, I mentioned several of these items as we talked, but if there was really, you know, if we had, uh, audit adjustments that we proposed, if we had concerns of fraud, if we had material weaknesses in the controls, I'd be required to bring that to your attention. Um, if we had disagreements with management on any items, if we had, um, any issues with our independence, uh, or, or perceived, uh, independence issues, I'd be required to bring that to your attention. But really, nothing negative that I need to bring to your attention through our audit process. And then lastly, I do just have my contact information here if there's questions outside of audit season, um, that you have. We do, you know, work with management as, as accounting questions come up, new accounting standards come out, you know, we work with, we can work with management on this and not, we don't want people to feel like they have to wait for audit season to hold questions of, if we could be of value at a, at a sooner date. So, that's all I, I had to report.
So, we did have a few issues in '23 that dragged that audit out.
Yeah, um, I mean, management could probably speak to the details better than me, but there was some turnover and, and staff. There was a new accounting system put in place, and it just seemed to be the perfect storm of trying to get reconciliations to work in the new system while you're also trying to close at the same time. So, that led to delays. And then there was another, um, accounting firm brought in to assist with closing the books, just to get extra sets of hands that could not, kind of finance has to worry about daily operations plus closing the books at the, at the same time can be a bit overwhelming. Again, I don't want to speak for management, but from my perspective, and then bringing in those extra set of hands helped get the books closed when they were. And then, for the '24 audit, you know, same system now that there's a, for the second year, same system in place. I think there's, the learning curve has been achieved, there's a familiarity with it, a lot of the same, and I know Caleb's new, but there is a lot of the same accounting staff. The, there is still the, um, the other accounting firm was still assisting with closing the books, so there was the continuity there. And, you know, the move, the audit moved up from being issued from, you know, we were sitting here, I think, June or July, or I was sitting here probably July presenting the '23 audit, and here it is, you know, about six months later that, um, we got the, um, '24 out, but '24 was dated in November 15th, so it was, it wasn't just audited, it was, it was issued a little bit ago, so.
I just think it's important for those citizens out there to hear from you instead of staff, because it's an outside view, and some would perceive staff as just, you know, covering for themselves. That's why I thought it was important that you talk about the issues that we worked through and how that's all been resolved and...
And I would say it's, you know, it's not uncommon. We audit lots of governments throughout the state and Penn, you know, state of Maryland, Pennsylvania. And th, things like this unfortunately happen, and I would say, one thing that I found impressive is, even though the '23 audit was delayed, I don't know if I've seen an audit, the timing come up so, so almost what it used to be. So, from it being delayed about 12 months to being issued in four months, that turnaround time in one year, I, I don't see very often. Normally, it's if it gets delayed a year, then it becomes like 10 months and then eight months, but I don't know if I, I can ever say it's been from about 12 months back to like what I would say, you know, close to normal or normal, so.
And in that delay, you didn't find anything?
No, we didn't find anything that we thought was...
It was just a process.
Yeah, I think it, it, it was process.
Yeah. Because, as I say, I'm just trying to z, uh, express concerns that we heard from the public about, you know, it's delayed, they, they have concerns about what, what's going on here, you know, you couldn't get your audit done on time. But, just want to highlight that there was, there were no issues other than process. So, that's all. Appreciate that. And we greatly appreciate staff. As you say, getting back on track that quickly is, is quite an accomplishment, and that couldn't happen without good staff. So, we greatly appreciate all the effort that staff went through to get us back on track so quickly, because as you say, things slip, and sometimes it takes a while to get you back, because you're already starting behind. So, um, we do want to take this time to recognize our staff for getting us all caught up.
Thank you all.
Absolutely. Thank you, staff. Any other questions? Catherine, did you have any questions or comments?
Just want to thank the staff. I met with Bruce yesterday and went over a few things, and, um, staff has done a fantastic job. Thank you all so much.
Absolutely. So, I guess, the staff has anything to add? Director Miller?
Thank you. Uh, no, I don't have anything further to say, but again, the appreciation to staff.
Absolutely. Thank y'all.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Are you waiting to see what they work?
Casey has something for you in the freezer.
Um, I don't know if I want to get close to Casey right now.
Oh, yeah, it's in the freezer.
Thank you, Beth. Next item on the agenda is a work session, Office of the County Administrator Capital Improvement Plan for FY '26 through FY 2031, and this includes Coward Library, Cow, County Administrator, and Departments of Planning and Zoning, Public Safety, Recreation Resources, and Technology Services. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Danielle Russell, Acting Capital and Grants Management Specialist. To my right is Mary Andes, Acting Deputy Director of Budget, uh, Office of Finance and Budget.
We have a lot of actors.
We have a lot of actors. Uh, I will forego reading the memo and jump right into our presentation if there are no objections. Okay. This presentation is the third in a series of work sessions to inform the B O C C of the six-year capital improvement plan costs as part of the staff recommended budget and seek the B O C C's input and direction on those projects. Today's presentation focus will be on the bulk of the other county departments as you listed, uh, Coward Library, County Administrator, Departments of Planning and Zoning, Public Safety, Recreation Resources, and Technology Services. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Danielle Russell, Acting Capital and Grants Management Specialist. To my right is Mary Andes, Acting Deputy Director of Budget, uh, Office of Finance and Budget.
We have a lot of actors.
We have a lot of actors. Uh, I will forego reading the memo and jump right into our presentation if there are no objections. Okay. This presentation is the third in a series of work sessions to inform the B O C C of the six-year capital improvement plan costs as part of the staff recommended budget and seek the B O C C's input and direction on those projects. Today's presentation focus will be on the bulk of the other county departments as you listed, uh, Coward Library, County Administrator, Departments of Planning and Zoning, Public Safety, Recreation Resources, and Technology Services. As a reminder from the first presentation, this chart's a high-level look at the total value of the staff recommended FY 2026 Six-Year Capital Improvement Plan with the FY '26 requests on the right, and on the left are the totals approved in the FY 2025 capital budget. The percent change is shown in the center column. Present hands as requested last week. Uh, the departments prioritize their projects, so instead of being listed just big to small, uh, they are listed now by priority by department. We'll revisit public works when we come back for our debrief.
Thank you.
Uh, we will first look at the County Administrator and Coward Libraries' projects. As set up in Workday, the County Administrator and libraries, they are their own divisions, uh, but they actually fall under public facilities in the FY 2025 capital budgets, just like we presented on the Marine Museum. The Marine Museum had the bulk of changes, so it fit well to go last week, but we'll just quickly go over County Administrator and Coward Library. Um, other than the Marine Museum, the only active project carrying, oh, sorry about that. The only active project carrying over under the County Administrator is the broadband expansion project. They are requesting no new funding, but you will see now that it does show up as an open project. The library closed one project, and the only major change from last year to this year is that they did flip Fairview Library and Southern Library in their out-year placements. County Administrator closed nine projects. For FY '26, Coward Library is requesting a mobile service branch, um, which is the replacement of a 2008 mobile services SUV with a Ford Transit-type vehicle for improved material transport to homebound customers, community events, senior centers, and childcare locations. They are looking at grant funding for interior customization. Do you have any questions for the library?
And that's not a book mo, bookmobile, that's just a regular transit vehicle.
Correct.
Delivery-type vehicle.
Yes. Yeah, Ford, they, they listed it as a Ford Transit-type.
Will it hold a lot of books? I have a lot of books I need to get rid of.
I don't know if it'll hold all of those books that you need to...
I already talked to Casey.
We could probably find out how many it will hold just coming to your house.
Uh, next up is...
Um, can I, this is, excuse me, this is, uh, Commissioner Grasso. Um, the mobile service branch, they're not requesting any new FTEs to run that. Do they al, they already have staff in place? They just need the vehicle?
Yes, ma'am. It's a replacement vehicle.
Oh, it's a replacement. Thank you.
No problem. I'm sorry I cut you off, Commissioner Grasso.
Oh, not a, not a problem. Doing a great job.
Next up is planning and zoning. The staff has no new FY '26 requests, so there's no change from FY 2025's budget. Just going over their edits and reviews, they did close two projects. Um, the water quality monitoring project was moved to their operating budget since it's not, um, starting out for implementation. And that didn't meet the threshold for capital projects. And they did refine the scope of a large, we're going to use the term bucket uh, planning project to focus on Main Street, Maryland designation planning, coincides with our, um, different zoning and planning projects that they're already working on, works with economic development as well. And their sustainable communities, um, application also had a focus on that.
So they have been carrying the water quality monitoring program under CIP?
Yes, uh, when they were starting the implementation. So it got, it got moved. It's in operating now where it belongs. Moving on from planning and zoning, we have public safety. Now, public safety covers more than just the Department of Public Safety. It also includes our volunteer fire rescue and EMS divisions, covers the sheriff's office and the detention center. Their FY 26 request, staff has a 215% increase from the anticipated funding request in FY 2025's capital improvement plan. Public Safety closed eight open project. Nothing was moved to operating. And in terms of refined scope, the only major change that we will be making is that each project will be assigned its own CIP number. It won't just be a big CIP number for each of the volunteer departments or each of the different programs. It, it'll cover the actual replacements. So. So for FY, do you want to ask a question first?
For this slide, so you can go ahead.
For FY 26, the volunteer departments are requesting two replacement vehicles. The apparatus, the apparatus replacement review committee did evaluate each apparatus in August 2024 and approved its replacement recommendation by the Fire and Rescue Commission in October of 2024. Calvert Advanced Life Support Company 10 is requesting the replacement of Medic 103 with an SUV or pickup type vehicle rated for police pursuit or severe service. North Beach Volunteer Fire Department and Rescue Service Company 1, replacement of ambulance 19 with a medium duty truck chassis type ambulance. Career EMS, um, they have four projects. The FMV LifePak 35 leased to own, um, is a four-year lease to own contract for 35 LifePak units. Replacing the current annual two-unit replacement cycle. This includes an eight-year service contract. Ambulance 38 replacement, this is the early replacement of ambulance 38 previously from volunteer company three from FY 28 to FY 26. Ambulance 49 replacement, transfer and replacement of ambulance 49 from volunteer company four to career EMS. And then a new EMS shift commander vehicle would be an acquisition of a new daily use response vehicle for the EMS operational leadership position. The final one on this slide is the narcotics control system, which would be implementation of a countywide uniform narcotics control system to address potential discrepancies with contingencies for installation and retrofitting. This is the Maryland opioid response, uh, grant that was under consent. Um, so they are looking at grant funding to cover this request. Questions?
Chief, you want to come forward? Or whoever, it does matter, somebody.
Good morning, Commissioners.
And who are you?
I also have, uh, Acting Chief Ford, which is Lieutenant Ford on a normal basis, but he's acting in my absence because of my illness. So he's here as well to answer questions.
Sure. Just if you could explain to the citizens what LifePak 35 is, so they know what we're doing.
Just so you're aware, the LifePak 35.
Microphone, please.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Grasso, I apologize. Um, just so you're aware, the LifePak 15 and 35 conversion is our cardiac devices. That's what our paramedic units, as well as our volunteer paramedics, as well as our volunteer BLS providers carry on all ambulances in Calvert County. So that's both career and volunteer. We have a cardiac device system that is utilized for first responders to do the EKGs, ECGs, and transmit the ability to the local hospital to identify early activation of STEMI heart attacks for the hospital to get them to a cardiac intervention center. Right now, currently we have the 15 model. The 15 model is going away. They're no longer producing it. That being said, the current situation that was taken over by career EMS from the volunteer ALS was they had a replacement cycle of two per year. These units cost anywhere from $65,000 to $80,000 apiece. Historically, we have applied for the 50/50 grant. That being said, that grants through the State of Maryland, Maryland Institute for Emergency Medical Services. It is a competitive grant. We're not guaranteed to get it every year. Um, what we've looked at is the amount of life packs that are transitioning. We would like to look at a fair market value lease agreement, which would include us replacing all of those countywide at one time for a fraction of the outcome of what we pay annually for two. At the current cycle, if we replace two annually, it's not going to meet the life expectancy of what we currently have. So that's going to have to be bumped up regardless to a minimum of four annually if we continue that. And I'd like to see us look at entertaining this fair market lease because one of the problems that you all are familiar with is after we buy these, then there's an additional cost annually for a pro care contract to service these things. Um, and that can be substantial. This last budget cycle, we had to do many adjustments and scrouched money up with the assistance of finance and budget to be able to identify that. We don't want to get in that situation again. So what we looked at is a fair market value for the cardiac devices to be able to give us the opportunity to replace countywide, have them on an eight-year service contract from the day we purchase them. And then at the end of that eight years, they belong to us. They also can be utilized for a trade-in credit for if we do the next cycle for the eight-year contract.
That was a good answer. Was that the long version or the short version?
That's it. That, that was the short one. I can sit down and give you more.
No, you, you, you were very thorough on that. Thank you, Kenny.
So actually you're trying to go from buying these to leasing them, cause then all your maintenance and upgrades are all covered in the lease.
100%.
And that'll be significant savings to us over time.
Yes, sir.
All right. Are you done?
Yeah.
All right. My question is, I was sitting there looking at career EMS ambulance 38 and looking at it's almost $200,000 difference from replacing ambulance 19 in company one. Could you explain to us why that is?
And I also, I'm going to let Joe, uh, as well, piggyback on anything that I don't have. So basically when, when, when I put a, a ambulance in my budget, I put it in, basically when I put ambulance in my budget, Commissioners, I put it in from start to finish turnkey. So as a career ALS unit, when we purchase these, we have life packs that we have to think about, the stretchers. Uh, we have a auto load system. We now incorporate a bariatric system into all of our ambulances when we purchase them outright. We build them, so it's a turnkey deal. So that price includes everything. These are new units for us, so we don't have an old unit to take any of these equip, this equipment off of to transfer over to the new unit.
But you have 38?
So 38 is a volunteer unit and that unit would not transition with anything over to us. It would only transition the allotment for the replacement of it. So when we get it, it's going to be bare-boned. Um, it will not have a stretcher. We're going to have to put the stretcher in it, things of that nature, which we do have a spare stretcher to utilize. So that's one of the things that I, I'd like to clarify and Joe can step in. The allotment transfer, when you look at the overall cost of the 668 or 668, yeah, 668, 602, there's a difference there. When we get that allotment, whatever's been allotted for ambulance three or ambulance four, the difference of that allotment is all we're really asking for. You're not getting that total 668. It's just going to be a difference of whatever that difference would make up 668. And Chief, if you've got anything else to add to that?
Yeah, I think, I think you pretty much hit it on the head. Understanding that the allotments are already there for the units. Um, and that's just being transferred to our division. And then the upcharge for all that stuff is just for the equipment that it takes to put that unit in service, uh, to be able to respond.
So what's going to happen to ambulance 38 and 49?
Uh, at this point, once we receive the units, at least ambulance three, where we're in the process of this, this almost completed, that unit is going to come to us. We are going to house the unit, staff it, maintenance it, uh, and put it in service as a response vehicle so that our employees are an accountable unit. That will last until the replacement. And currently the replacement cycles for the ambulances are running anywhere from 18 months to three years. So you've got a unit now that's got 100,000 miles on it. By the time it's, uh, put out of service, you're looking at 300 plus thousand miles. So do we have the capability of moving vehicles around? Cause I know Solomon's the Prince Redder. They, they acquire a lot of mileage, so. So typically, um, we follow a lot of our replacement cycles. Um, we, we went along with what the volunteer commission does and they're, uh, they're grouped and inspects the units. So ambulance 38 was supposed to go for inspection this year. Uh, it did not because they were transferring it to us. So that unit was taken to John Syper, um, the head of fleet maintenance, and he did his inspection on it. Um, he checked the chassis, the brakes, um, the box and all of that stuff. So we go through the same cycles as of what they do. Uh, it just happens that company three's units is approved by the fire commission on the volunteer side, usually have about a four-year replacement. Uh, and that's due to mileage. So because they're so busy, they're so far away, they're replaced at four years where most units are replaced in eight. So you talked about, um, or Kenny, I think you talked about truck and chassis, uh, ambulances versus, I guess, the old typical F-350 that we went to. Is a change there? Is that because of longevity or? So, so typically with Solomon's, um, and I can speak because I was a chief there for, for a few minutes. They went to medium duty chassis down there because of longevity. Uh, they last a lot longer with the road mileage and the wear and tear from the mileage. So that's why we were looking at going back and we put our first paramedic ambulance down there was a medium duty chassis. Uh, and they've held up service time and all that's as far as out of service hours and things go. Um, so that's what kind of where we're planning on sticking with, uh, as far as that end goes. All right, thank you.
So the last item on there says a new captain? Is that a new position or is that already been approved?
No, sir. That is, would be for a new position. It's in the operating budget that we requested. Um, obviously we're, and, and there's no secret. And I know that I look at y'all and say this with hard, hard intentions as my dedication to the volunteer side here is hard as well. We're growing. Um, the need for service is growing and we, right now, our span of control is over double what it should be. Our supervisor on a daily basis are supervising 13 plus individuals. Um, so there is really a true need, not only for, to assist me at an executive level, but to have that shift supervisor to oversee and help.
We're not debating FTEs today.
Understand. Just, just that vehicle would strictly be there if that position was approved. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Catherine, did you have a question?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, I do have one question. What is the second gentleman's name?
Joseph Ford, ma'am. I'm the EMS lieutenant for Calvert County. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay.
We're going to look at Calvert County Sheriff's Office Detention Center. Again, this falls under public safety, but we broke them out separately. On the left is how the staff recommended CIP projects were submitted for the sheriff's office and detention center. And then on the right is after talking to them about prioritization. There were some adjustments that the sheriff's office is requesting, uh, for the commissioner's recommended budget. So we can just talk briefly about that. Currently they have the detention center chiller in FY 26. And then the new sheriff's facility as well as, uh, a mental health and medical unit at the detention center being requested 27, 28. So those are our big out-year projects. Uh, for the detention center, they are prioritizing that mental health and medical unit. It's their highest priority project. The planning phase currently is at 85,000. They would like to increase that to 200,000 and move it to FY 26. Um, the project scope includes architectural and engineering study for design improvements. There'll be construction of a new jail medical and mental health unit, and then upgrades to the center processing and jail booking unit. Uh, total project costs are expected to exceed 16 million. And the state of Maryland will only provide matching funds if the entire minimum security section is essentially demolished and rebuilt, uh, to meet modern specifications. So right now we're not able to look at state funding assistance for that. Their priority level two was chiller replacement, um, high priority project, planning phase, uh, which is FY 26 was $50,000. And then in FY 27, it's 1.1 to do the actual replacement. Now, the chillers are critical for maintaining air conditioning 24/7 in the facility. For the sheriff's office.
Go ahead.
Director, any, nobody's here for the sheriff's office?
So I, I could tell you that the medium security, I believe, is the original pod from the original detention center.
But that's in 27 and 28?
And then it was added on, um, from there.
Originally they had 5.5 million in 2030. So this was last year when we approved the six-year plan. And then when they were in discussions with the state about that project, that's how this unfolded.
So for 26, they just want a chiller and the 100,000 for design or planning for the new building?
Um, so we're looking at the detention centers. They want 200,000 for, for plant, for the A and E, um, in 26 now for the detention center.
But they only had 100. It says adding 100 for planning.
That's for the sheriff's office. That's for, uh, for the new district. So that's separate. The new district two facility is separate from the detention center request. Um, and per the sheriff's office, the detention center and sheriff's office have separate budgets, so they were prioritizing based on those two budgets.
And this is, you know, I normally don't worry about the out-years. Where is the new jail going to go?
So right now it's in 20, 28 is where they had the 16, uh, point five million. Um, they have been working with our director of public works, uh, to start maybe breaking that down into phases rather than putting a lump sum, but, uh, that will require some refinement going forward.
Where are they going to build it? They have enough room where they currently are to build a new jail?
So I think, um, I don't want to speak for them, but the occupancy of the jail right now, they probably actually have enough of maximum security to house your medium. So they probably, as she said, would have to do it in phases, but there's still probably plenty of room for housing. Again, I might, I might be speaking out of turn, but.
We can certainly have them come in on that, that final presentation day to, uh, to ask some more questions.
We won't worry about that till 27. So, so back to the metal, medical and, uh, mental health, uh, detention center. Is that state mandated for?
I, they, they were working with the state. So this did come out of conversations with the state about what was needed at the detention center to modernize.
I can let my question go next year.
Okay. For the sheriff's office, their priority project is the district two new facility. Um, they are asking for an addition, an additional $100,000 for planning in FY 26. The total project cost is estimated right now at about 13.3 million. And includes the construction of a new facility to reduce maintenance costs, um, and then better accommodate staff, fleet, and community needs. Last year we did talk about potentially pulling that project forward. So this is pulled forward two years from where it was in FY 28. They're just asking for some planning, uh, funding now in FY 26.
But isn't that like dominoes? Something else has got to happen before they can do that?
There, the, the, there are some other pieces that would need to move. And, uh, County Administrator Mark Willis and I, when we do the debrief one on March 4th, uh, we can talk a little bit more about those.
Next year.
Domino, domino pieces.
Again, I know it's out there, but the 16, 5, did you say that was federal or state funding?
It's, it would need county funding. At this time they're, they do not have state funding slotted for that.
And the federal funding.
We can, so capital projects, getting capital funding projects for facilities like this can be tricky, um, especially when you're looking at grant funding because they it's, they don't have as many opportunities when it comes to government-run buildings. They do have some possibility of capital funding, but they wanted the detention center to modernize first. So there was, there were things that we had to do at the county level before they were considered. Now, we did file a letter with the state, um, giving them our plan for capital funding. We'll continue to do that, um, to see if there is capital funding available at the state level.
Thank you.
You have any questions, Catherine?
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. All right.
Uh, the next slide is recreation resources. For their FY 26 request, staff has a 16% increase from the anticipated funding request in FY 2025's capital improvement plan. Recreation Resources closed 22 open projects. Nothing moved to operating. And in terms of refined scope, very similar to public safety, um, we are going to assign CIP project numbers to specific projects. That way we have a pretty clear open and, and date for those projects. These are again ranked by priority. Uh, number one is Cove Point Park Playground. In FY 25 program open space funds, they did receive 300,000 or DNR approved 300,000, and now they need, um, a match for that. So they're requesting $800,000 to match the full replacement of the aging playground at Cove Point Park. Marley Run Parking Lot Erosion Control, uh, renovation of the stormwater system to prevent erosion that threatens a baseball field. When the commissioner's recommended budget comes as well, uh, we have talked with Department of Public Works about combining that with the field replacements as well, so that we're doing all of it at once rather than doing one part and then fixing another part down the line. So it would be involved in the, uh, parking lot erosion control.
So we've been park, talking about the parking lot erosion for quite a while. We're still just getting around to fixing it?
Marley Run?
And that total project is how much?
So the total project for that, so we have a million and I'll have to look back at my numbers on the out-year, but the, the, the baseball field replacement as well.
Hi, Amanda Stowag in Park and Safety Division Chief. So, um, with Marley Run, we had design money.
that we have already currently cut a PO and we're working on the design. We have two million split over two years to do the overall, um, drainage and erosion control project for Marley. What Danielle was speaking about is we also had money in infield renovations. And if you guys have, you know, been to Marley, it's very bound by topography. So there's no way we could put two and a half million dollars into regrading the entire site and then going in and regrading all of the baseball fields. So really, it would be taking, the money was in there, um, for the baseball field renovation. We're just asking to include it and make it part of this project because it's just an overall drainage project. Whether you're doing the fields or you're doing the parking lot. So it's really just addressing stormwater and drainage for the entire site.
But if we do the million this year, does that lock us in for the million next year? Are they two separate projects or are they just?
I, we need, we need the combined funding to do the overall.
Right. So really what we're committing to is a million for this year and a million for next year.
Correct.
That's important information.
Yes.
Commissioners, Mark Willis, county administrator, one of the efforts that we're making within the CIP overhaul in general, and specifically with Parks and Recs is probably, uh, with public works is the best example. We have stormwater management issues around the county, whether they're on roads, at intersections or at ball fields or at park and recreation areas. So, and something like this, we're trying to make a, a dedicated effort to make sure we fix not just the drainage, but what the drainage impacted. In this case, it's something like a field. Uh, we know areas where we could fix the drainage at an intersection, which will save the road. So it's a, it's a new effort that we're looking to optimize efficiency and hopefully save money in the long run. So that's what this is about.
So Danielle, some new direction is that, um, we do need to know in these projects if we're, we're approving a, an expense this year that has extended funding required, that needs to be footnoted or something in there. I mean, I'm, I'm not opposed to it. I'm just saying that when we make that decision, uh, we, that's information we need to have.
Definitely help us in the process, just like prioritizing. We're tweaking as we go along, I guess, Danielle, is what we're doing here.
Yeah, and we, when we come back for the debrief, we can definitely make sure that we highlight the projects like this one where we're talking about that.
Yeah, we just need to know that because, you know, we don't wanna start a project in the next year. We need to know.
Yes, sir. The next project is Flag Pond's Nature Park Living Shoreline. Uh, this is shoreline protection and flood mitigation project, includes dredging and restoration. We did look into grant funds, uh, Director Branham, myself, their grant writer and Parks and Rec Jesse O'Bryant. Unless it is a recreational boating area, uh, there's not funding available for dredging, uh, unfortunately. So we have to cover at least the dredging portion, um, and then we can seek grant funding for other, uh, living shoreline components through the state.
And that's a completed project for two point seven?
No.
That is, I, I don't believe that they had more out, I don't believe they had anymore in the out years.
That was an eight million dollar project.
Okay, yeah, so Karen Malinas, uh, division chief for natural resources. The two point seven million would cover, um, the majority of the shoreline that needs to be protected. And whether additional shoreline would need be protected really would be determined of the, um, success of this pro- project.
That's why I asked, because I knew earlier we'd heard a much higher number, so I was just trying to.
Yeah, yeah, the number is, um, is still something that is based off of, um, looking at a certain amount per linear foot. And wait, Amanda, was something like ten thousand per mini, linear foot?
Yes, last week, we met, um, uh, Karen, myself and a few others from Parks and Recreation. We sat down with the Department of Public Works and soils conservation district to really just revisit this project because we've been trying to work at it. Karen's been trying to work at this for a really long time. The, they seem to feel confident in the numbers that they had for the two point seven, but we are going to have to redesign and refile for permits. And so there will be some accrued cost in that design, as you know. So I do think that there will be a slight increase from the two point seven, but I don't think it's going to be double the amount.
So initially, uh, that number for that project, if my memory serves correctly, was right around eight million. And then we had talked about doing it in phases. So are we, is this just one phase of it?
No, actually, they're, they're saying it's the entire shoreline, but I think that we've seen some best management practices. We learned a lot from Breezy Point Shoreline. I think that they're thinking that the original plan that was done and the amount of breakwaters that were designed is not needed. And that they're looking into, you know, oyster reefs and some other things that we can do to really mitigate the erosion there. Um, and I, you know, Karen can, can speak much more to the property than I can. That's just what we had discussed last week at our meeting. And I think that there are better ways of doing it than when the design was done back in yeah, twenty fourteen.
Okay, yeah, because we had heard, been hearing a much higher number, that's why.
And usually numbers go up, they don't go down. And that's why I was asking, is this just a phase of it, you know?
Good morning, Commissioners Bob Branham, Director of Parks and Recreation. So as you just stated, the quote is several years old and conditions have likely changed, what may change the scope of the work. So I don't wanna provide false promises here to tell you that that two point seven will cover it. It has to be reevaluated because conditions have certainly changed out there and the quote is dated, so.
So Bob, you're talking about dredging. I believe the last time we heard it was actually gonna be a trucked project, so we're going back to a dredging project now?
You mean for the sand?
Sand, yeah.
A- as far as I understand, they can't bring it in by way of water. Um, I'm not sure if you recall.
So, um, yeah, the option has always been, um, to have either via land or by the dredging. And the analysis of the dredge channel was that that dredge materials would be satisfactory for the living shoreline. So that we would be able to use the dredge materials for the shoreline and then we could then bring in, uh, materials through that dredge channel. And that was something in, uh, the previous, um, leadership in soil conservation did discuss with Maryland Department of Environment. And it was, seemed like it was a feasible plan, um, as long as we could include the mitigation within the whole, um, project. So that's where the expansion from the small five hundred foot section up to now, um, I think it's twenty six hundred feet is to count for all the mitigation needs for the project.
So I know that they dredge Flag Harbor annually. I don't know if that permit process or how it works, but are you talking about putting a separate channel coming into the Flag Pond Park?
Uh, it's in, along the, um, shoreline area and we can share the, um, plans, the current plans that we have. But like I said, we will be, uh, redesigning based off of the changes in the shoreline because each year there has been excessive erosion. And the difference between the Flag, um, Harbor and Flag Ponds is Flag Harbors is a navigational channel where they, um, do dredge from there. And I'm, I don't recall if that, that soil was inspected for whether it would be reusable for the, um, replacement sand.
I was just thinking about costs because it is a need for them to dredge that harbor annually. And if it, you know, it'd offset costs, that's what I was thinking about.
Right, right. And that's definitely something we can ask, um, as we do the designs to evaluate.
And it may already be spoken for because I know they put some of that sand on the beach at Long Beach.
Right, yeah.
So something worth looking at, that's all.
So is, because of the shoreline issues at Flag Ponds, is that impacting the community to the north, Long Beach?
Yes, it is. Yeah, and every time there's a storm surge, um, the water does, um, infiltrate into the property. It's still currently Flag Pond's property, but then it, um, is right adjacent to the, um, own, the private property.
Long Beach.
Yeah. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Be interested moving forward. Keep us updated, please.
Okay, next up is Ward Farm Recreation and Nature Park. This supports the master plan build out of the park and it is covered, at this point, it is covered a hundred percent by CCYROF, Calhoun County Youth Recreational Opportunity Fund, uh, which is state mandated to go to Ward Farm first. Um, so this does have money every year allocated to it, but it is, it is based on that CCYROF funding.
Director?
So Bob Branham, Director of Parks and Recreation. So we recently had communications with the state. One of, one of their staff is stating that there's a mandate, uh, that there is a twenty five percent local match. Uh, I forwarded all of that to, uh, the county attorney, John Norris, for review. We're not certain that that's actually required, so we're looking at that now. I just wanted to make sure that you understood that going in, in this conversation. So we fully anticipate that that money could directly be used to support without a match, but, uh, I am getting some pushback from the state currently.
That's interesting because that's an allocation out of the revenues from the bingo machines that they would require a match for that.
Yes, sir.
That is an interesting.
I, I got, uh, the, the supporting document, I asked for it in writing. And the supporting documentation that I got that I forwarded to the county attorney is that, um, they had a meeting and they had minutes from the meeting. I don't know that any of us were privy to that meeting or there to, to witness whatever agreement or arrangement was made. So I, I don't know. I can't speak to that. John would have to do that. But I'm not certain that we are required to, but again, I just wanna share the information because I am getting a little pushback currently.
Knowing the individual involved, I'm surprised they're minutes.
Um, we are working on the application, so, but because that funding is a little weird when it comes to grant funding, um, they are requiring us to put in a new application based on the master plan. Um, so that conversation came from Jesse O'Bryant and Director Branham, uh, and other Parks and Recreation staff working on that new application for the funding.
So every year you have to ask to get that revenue or is that a direct distribution?
We have to file reimbursements.
Right.
And they have to approve how we spend the money?
Correct. It has to, the application has to align with uh, the way that the funding was intended to be used.
Well, the funding was intended to be used at Ward Farm. I'm surprised that they have to approve what projects we use it on as long as we use it at Ward Farm Park. I'm looking at you, Mr. County Attorney.
Yeah, John Doris County Attorney. When that, uh, legislation was passed, it is only required to be used at Ward Farm, Ward Farm Park. But, um, there are other things that are in play. The Land Preservation, Recreation and Parks Plan that gets approved and incorporated into the comprehensive plan, uh, is one of those documents. There is a master plan for Ward Farm Park that I'm not sure has been formally adopted or has, has been formally adopted.
It was presented and adopted, yeah.
So in some contexts, they are looking at the documents that, in one case, they have reviewed and approved to make sure that the expenditures are consistent with what we've planned and how we plan to develop that park. In other respect, um, their oversight is becoming more heavy handed than it has been in the past. And it may be worth our while next session to ask to have that money come directly to the county and no longer sit in a special fund.
And just for anybody out there listening, Senator Miller is the one that got that funding in place when they were negotiating the license for the bingo machines in the beach. And so it's just interesting to hear all the strings being applied.
It also does state that moving forward once Ward Farm is built out, that it can be utilized in Parks and Recreation outside of Ward Farm, but that's years down the road, so.
Yeah, we know how long it takes to do a master plan in a park.
Commissioner Hans, I just wanted to address one of your questions as far as the application process was concerned. So when the, when the last application was submitted in twenty twenty two, we listed out what was incorporated in kind of the first and second phase. Those things have all been built and closed out. So the new application that we're preparing, it's not something that you have to submit yearly, but they do wanna know what your intentions are. And I think it's really just a tracking to see if the funding is going towards the build out. So the application that we would be submitting now, or currently as soon as Bob gets that direction, um, is requesting funding to finish the, the amount of funding that we need to finish the multi-use restroom building that we're building. And then we'll, we need to build a maintenance shop. And then we ask for if there's any funding left over to continue to build out the trail system, both paved and natural. That's what we have listed, it would be listed in the next application.
Appreciate that. The match requirement is a new wrinkle that we work.
That's the hiccup.
For all of us, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's a new interpretation by somebody, so we, we could work through that if you need some help. Thank you.
Um, next project in priority is Chesapeake Hills Golf Course Improvements. Um, this is an annual request, uh, includes renovations to cart pathways, a cart barn, a driving range, uh, tee box realignment and building improvements. So every year they're putting money into, uh, course improvements. The next project is Breezy Point Parking and Drainage. Drainage improvements to prevent standing water and frequent closures due to tidal and storm events at Breezy Point Park. Land Preservation, Parks and Recreation Plan, uh, came up during the conversation about Ward Farm. Uh, program open space funding goes towards this every year. That twenty five thousand is, is program open space funding. And then builds up to, on the fifth year, they're able to complete their LPP RP, oh gosh, LPP RP plan, yes. Um, and then last is Hall Aquatic Center HVAC roof, uh, fifty thousand. Director Branham and I, uh, spoke at the end of last week, so it was after the presentation, uh, was put up. But, uh, we are most likely going to be removing that project, um, because it no longer aligns with the way that that project is working out.
Uh, Commissioner Rasso, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions, but, um, I'd like to point out for the public that Cove Point Park Playground, uh, portion of it is condemned. And we need to be working to take care of what we have. Director Branham, if I'm not mistaken, when I walked the Marley Park with you, uh, behind one of the fields, there was tremendous erosion at the fence line. Uh, it seems to me that that project is very critical for us. And, uh, uh, I'm a big advocate of taking care of what we have before we start other projects. Because if we have projects that are closed down, public can't use them. So, um, those are two big projects on my list. Thank you.
Okay. Final section for review today is Technology Services. For their FY twenty six request, staff has an eighty eight percent decrease from the anticipated funding request in FY twenty twenty five's capital improvement plan. Technology Services closed ten open projects. Four projects were moved to their operating budget because they did not meet the threshold for capital projects. Technology Services originally had, this is our refined scope, they originally had three big bucket, uh, projects. And during the edits and review process, staff broke those big buckets into specific implementation or software systems. So enterprise systems is now broken into five separate projects. Network infrastructure was broken into nine projects and public safety system was broken into eleven projects. Fuel master replacement, upgrade the outdated fuel management system to improve reporting accuracy and compliance. This was deferred from FY twenty five, but remains a high priority due to aging infrastructure. Service Now Transition, it's a migration to Service Now for unified support requests, workflow automation and improved collaboration. Um, this is a high priority to replace Zendesk, uh, and ensure smooth service. Sorry, and ensure smooth service delivery. E prosecutor court interface, this is implementation of a bidirectional data interface with the state's court system to improve efficiency by fifteen to twenty percent through reduced duplicate data entry. Existing templates may streamline integration. Budget book integration through OpenGov, potential implement, implementation of OpenGov budget book software. Pending evaluation of Workday's native functionality after finance and budget completes their adaptive, um, module. Law enforcement, field mobile shield force, deployment of a mobile application to provide officers with field data a- access. Interest has been expressed by the sheriff's office, uh, but it is considered low priority, uh, by Technology Services staff.
So the finance and budget, budget book integration piece, is that something supported by the Director of Finance and Budget?
Well, I am looking for, and this may be a part of that, um, is a system that allows us to do the reporting both on the financial statements and on the button, creating the budget book. Right now, both are very manual processes, um, and there are systems applications that will provide for both. We'll ta- we'll take a look at, and if it passes muster, um, by all means. But, um, the, the, I think it's more important that we get a dollar amount in there to start moving forward with that.
I just, I know it's under IT because, but I just wanted, wanted to hear from you.
Yes, we, we are in need of, yes.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Rasso, do you have any questions?
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. So again, we are seeking input from the community on CIP projects. Uh, web form is available, uh, for citizens to submit questions and comments. We do ask that you reference the project name and CIP project number if you can. It's very helpful. We will be back, not next week, but in two weeks, uh, to go through the Board of Education's capital projects requests. Um, and then on March fourth, again, to talk about debrief review, anything that you guys have brought up during these meetings. Any other questions?
So just remember when we do the final that we include those projects that have carryover.
Yes, and as well as, uh, the Department of Public Works. Yes, and as well as the Department of Public Works priority, prioritization.
It's more about, we're allocating 2 million for a project that's going to take two years.
Correct.
Then a one-year at a time, so.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Hans, again, Mark Boles, County Minister. That's one of the areas that we're focusing on because you, you can't come into a CIP with the expectation that you're going to build something as big as the County Administration Building, for example, and get that done in one year. Two main reasons. One, you're not going to build it in one year. And two, we're not going to pull the bonds for all of it in one year when it's going to take us two and a half years to build it. We're only going to pull those bonds when we actually need to, to use that money, and only then will we start paying the interest on that, or paying that back and the interest associated.
Right. And I understand there may be projects where we might want design money, start to figure out what it's going to cost, and then we'd make a decision. So I understand that sometimes we're going to make financial decisions that have outward impacts. It's just when you have, you know, today Marley Run, that's basically a $2 million project.
Yes, sir.
And a good example of that, sir, coming up, will be when we entertain the, say, Sheriff's Office building. There's, has to be design money upfront. There's a, because they are going to use a existing building and renovate it, so there's a, that's, and we're looking at those in phases. So phases typically will run multiple years. Phase one would be the initial building, and money's associated. Phase two, the next year. Phase three, the following year. So we'll, we'll break all of that out.
Right. And then depending on what that design says, would may impact the decision of when we start that project. So.
Yes, sir.
That's normal. Any other questions, anybody?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
I know.
All right. The next item on the agenda is public comment.
Unless there's anyone in the room, there is no one online, Mr. President. Only people left are staff, unless the reporter has a question or a comment. So that brings us to Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Grasso, would you like to go first?
Before I got sick, I spoke and attended a Republican Women Leaders of Calver County meeting, and I'd like to thank Katie Britton. I, I had an obligation on Saturday that I was just way too sick to attend, and she took care of the legwork and paperwork for me. Our staff, our administrator's staff is, is compared to none. I really appreciate it. And I want to offer my regret that two men that I greatly admired and have known throughout the years, Mark Frazier and Mike King, I was unable to attend any of the services for them, and also for two of our young men who lost their lives in the airplane crash. I swear to God, I've not been this sick since our daughter was a toddler. And if one of them had a wedding this weekend, their mother would be homesick in bed. I just, I could not even lift my head. So I'm on the mend now and looking forward to getting back in the office and getting rid of this, this sickness behind me. So thank you all. I think that's about all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you. We hope you feel better.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cox?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, too, have been under the weather this week and missed a lot of meetings and funeral services, which I wish I could attend, but didn't want to get anybody as sick as I was.
You know, I've been leaning to the right all day.
You better not get us sick.
No, I'm good now. I'm good now. So Valentine's Day is this weekend, so happy Valentine's Day. We have snow coming this afternoon and this evening, so if you don't have to be on the road, please stay home. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Ireland?
So I, it's been a week of funerals. Like I said, Catherine, Commissioner Grasso mentioned Mike King and, and Mark Frazier, who both, as we talked about in our announcements this weekend, last week, unfortunately. Both of them were, were icons of our community. They're, they're both gone. We, you know, keep prayers for, for the families involved there. Saturday, on a, on a positive note, the, they have a youth and veteran hunt annually, and they did a hunt with Jacob. The Howells family tragedy, this is something positive that came out of that. And they probably had, if I had to guess, I didn't count, but I'd say there were approximately 40 youth that participated in the waterfowl hunt this year. And they had a big event at their farm, tended that. And Commissioner Hans, I'm sure is going to touch on and expound further, but it was good to see. I'd say there's probably close to 150 people there with, with parents and people helping out and, as well as the youth. Took a big picture. Some of them were successful, some of them not so successful, but all in all, the overall vibe there was phenomenal. It was, it was good to see that. And hopefully, it won't do anything but continue to grow in, in future years. Commissioner Cox spearheaded a GoFundMe page for the victims of the, of the plane crash for the Southern Maryland area. It was a combination of Charles County, St. Mary's County, and Calver County. It was all put together by Commissioner Cox, but it was supported by the local conservation groups. Due to them being 501(c)(3)'s, they're unable to do a GoFundMe page or this type of event. However, they support it. They were behind it 100%. And that, the monies from that will be split up amongst all of the victims from Southern Maryland. And I believe it's raised about $235,000. So that's pretty significant. That's all I have at this time.
Thank you. So as Commissioner Ireland mentioned, Saturday was a busy day. Started out at an Eagle Scout ceremony at Kings Landing Camp where four young men achieved the rank of Eagle Scout. And I've said it numerous times, if you have a young child, it's a great organization, get involved in the scouting. You know, it's a proven fact that these young men that achieve the rank of Eagle Scout go on to be great citizens and contribute to the communities. And only 4% actually make Eagle Scout. I'm a failure. I dropped out. So I couldn't cut it. But it was a good ceremony. They're always very humbling, and family shows up to support these young men. So it's, try not to miss them. I haven't missed too many. Try not to miss them because it is a, is a great event, and it's a privilege and an honor to be there. I left there and went to the Howells event that Commissioner Ireland talked about, and I know there's certainly people that don't support sport hunting, but it's a great community and a great family. And I think I heard Saturday there were 44 youth hunters that day. It's a special day where only youth and veterans can hunt. And as he said, the Howells family had a significant tragedy several years ago and have tried to turn that into a public benefit. They hosted the event, and it grows every year. It used to be in the garage, now they've got to put up, had to put up tents to house everybody. And they do, they have different youth-oriented presentations by DNR, talk about hunter's safety and how to hunt safely, and teach them how to gun safety and how to call and how to, numerous things. They had a lot of activities there for the youth. And that day, I accepted a check for Commissioner Cox on his behalf. The Howells family held a raffle for those individuals that were on that plane, and they raised $22,000. And, you know, those of us in the hunting community, if, you know, you sort of pay attention, it's, it's, it's quite an outpouring of support for these families from across the country. It's not just here in Southern Maryland. The place where they hunted in Kansas, they're holding their own events to raise money. And for one, they did them separately, and for one individual, they've already raised $126,000 for just the one guy. So when it's all said and done, it's going to be outstanding amount of effort put into this and quite an accomplishment of fundraising.
And just to add to that point, it was, it was Ducks Unlimited, it was Sportsman's Club, it was Delta Waterfowl, it was National Wild Turkey Federation. It was a community effort. It really was.
And it's all across the country. If you watch the websites, it's, it's, it's very humbling. So I left the Howells event and went to the Sportsman's Club dinner, or the Sportsman's Dinner down at the Baptist Church. And unfortunately, Commissioner Cox couldn't come to that either, but they also had a great event, and it's religiously oriented, as is the Howells event. You know, they talked about, you know, faith and religion and how that affects our lives. And so at the Baptist Church, they kind of do the same thing and give away some things to youth and try to support youth and get them involved in things so they're not just sitting in a house with their face stuck in some TV, in front of a TV or in some gaming device. So, and I told those youth on Saturday, you know, hunting is not about killing. You know, everybody, that's all they want to talk about. You know, some of my best hunts, we didn't kill anything. It's about camaraderie, seeing nature. You know, you're going to see things that God created that you never would have seen if you weren't hunting, that a lot of your friends are never going to see. I've seen a lot of beautiful sunrises and sunsets and mountains and places I never would have seen if I weren't there hunting. And it's, again, it's not about the killing, it's about the.
Just fellowship and stories.
That's right. So.
Memories.
That's right. So, and on Sunday, I attended Commissioner Frazier's viewing, and a very sad event, very unexpected. So it's that he was still practicing, I think, two days a week, and he was 85 years old. So, you know, he didn't, didn't let, give up even at the end. So, so, on more business note, just want to remind everybody about the public hearing next Tuesday night at 6:00 right here in the Commissioner's Hearing Room, and that's to finalize the zoning ordinance update. And if something happens and we conclude before 7:00, we'll adjourn and to make sure, since we've advertised, that we'll still be here at 7:00 if we have to. And the planned road closure in Solomons has been extended until next week due to inclement weather. Lund Kelly Animal Shelter has an adoption event starting today, ends on Saturday, where you can adopt any cat or dog for $14. And just a little word, you know, they're calling for eight inches of snow. The weathermen are not always right, and this storm will not be like the one in January the 6th. This snow will not be here for three weeks. You're not going to be frozen in your house. It's going to rain Wednesday. It's going to, they said we might get three inches of rain between Wednesday night and Sunday. This snow will be gone by Friday, so don't freak out. Just take it easy tomorrow morning for a minute and just chill. And just a reminder, you know, now that we all sit in these chairs, we look at snow differently. The snowstorm on January the 6th cost the county $1.2 million. This storm tonight, while the snow may be gone by Thursday, nobody will stand to have a snowflake on the road, it's going to cost us a lot of money to get rid of that snow before the rain. So just be mindful that it's expensive. It's beautiful, but it's expensive.
What do you look at?
So I think that's all I have. There's a motion?
There is. Send it up on the right seat here, sir. So I move that we recess to close session pursuant to 3-305B1I to discuss employment, assignment, or promotion of appointees or employees over whom the board has jurisdiction. And number 2B4, to consider a matter that concerns a proposal for a business or industrial organization to locate, expand, or remain in the state.
Second? I have a motion in a second. That we go into executive session. Any discussion on that motion hearing, none? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. Everybody have a great day.
Thank you.